I want you to hear what that was. I said, "Do you want to go on placement next?" Let me get it right. Don't know. You won't know until you get there.
You said we're just going to be staring at it.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, I couldn't answer that question. I have no idea.
Try and order next time. Great.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. If everyone will please stand for a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silent reflection, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible by liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, we have parole call, please.
President Peters?
Here.
Councilman Eads?
Here.
Councilman Hayes?
Present.
Councilman Hitt?
Here.
Councilman McDaniel?
Here.
Councilman Norman?
Here.
Councilman Stahl?
Present.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Everybody get, take, take a look at the minutes from September 5th. Any corrections, questions, concerns? All in favor to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Get a motion to exit regular meeting to enter to public hearing, please.
Make a motion.
Second.
Then we'll let Greg take over.
We're now entering the public hearing for, pardon me, Resolution 15924 sponsored by Shannon Traynor to adopt the recommendations of the Planning Commission, the Johnson's Creek subdivision. Do we have anyone here to speak on behalf of Johnson's Creek this evening?
Paul Gross.
Paul Gross, the landowner and developer for the Johnson's Creek subdivision. I've shared with council before, so I won't be repetitive tonight, but we are super excited about the opportunity that this brings to London, Ohio. I've lived here twenty some, twenty-three years or something along those lines. I think you'd have to be naive to not recognize that central Ohio is in a growth spurt with all of the activity that's happening through the, on the far northeast side of the community, the Intel project closer to us, the Honda EV project, Google, Microsoft, Amazon, all of the hospital systems, each investing billions of dollars into what is now the fastest growing MSA in the United States of America for the past twelve months. The Johnson's Creek subdivision represents what I would consider to be one of the most elite subdivisions that central Ohio will be embraced with. Before embracing the project itself, we met with each and every one of the landowners that adjoin it, not because we had to, but because we wanted to be good neighbors, went door to door, asked them to share their feedback. We tried to incorporate the feedback from all of those who participated in that process. We've gone through a multitude of hearings, both with Planning Commission and before this council, and I think we've done everything that can reasonably be done to bring smart growth to this community. And I think when you see what this does for the city at large, you'll be very, very pleased with the outcome. I can tell you, and while I'm not here to speak, on behalf of the schools, I speak with the school district regularly to make sure that we're doing something that's in their interest, and I think this is going to really catapult London in a way that makes us all proud. So I will be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have, but I think this is a very special project that each of us can hang our hat on, and I didn't wear a hat tonight to be disrespectful. I was at the Reds game before this, so I wasn't going to have hat had afterwards. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them. Wes Smith is on my team and is a civil engineer, and he can address more of the technical questions, but we've brought in EMH&amp;T, which is one of the most respective civil engineering firms to make sure that we incorporate the feedback that we've gotten from those neighbors, and we're proud of where we've arrived after soliciting that feedback and really trying to be community oriented, and that's, that's all we've got to say. Any questions from the commission?
Can I ask, what, what would you say is your target market, your, your target income of the person that wants to move into your development?
So Councilman Norman, that's a great question, and the target market is, is fascinating. So London Landing, which I'm also directly associated with, it's first-time home buyers. And, you know, if you ask me what a first-time home buyer was, in my definition, I would give you a very different definition than what the market tells us today. First-time home buyers are at $360,000 homes, right? To me, my first-time home was $28,500, so I'm not that old, so it's a radically different kind of perspective to understand. These homes will be between $400,000 and $650,000 is what we're expecting in this community between the two builders that are going to be a part of it. So, so, so what I'll say, if I could, that's going to have an effect on every homeowner that adjoins it, right? Like, so while everyone might well prefer seeing a soybean field or a cornfield in their backyard, everyone that's an adjoining landowner is going to get a lot wealthier because of the type of homes that we're bringing in and the way that property values are going to appreciate, and some will say, "Hey, I'm going to have to pay more property tax." That may well be true.
Right.
Okay, but your net worth is going up demonstrably more than your property tax, and so that's a pretty good trade, right? So $400,000 to $650,000 are the price target of these homes.
So is it fair to say that probably most of these homes will be sold to a majority of the people that don't live in our county, so we're going to be bringing in new residents from other places?
I think, I think that is true based on what we've seen with London Landing, but I, but I also expect that people will also see their property value go up, and they will want to upgrade, you know, because they'll have a, a mortgage that allows them to trade up. So I do think you'll see some, you know, a fair about, a fair bit of trade up, but if we use London Landing as an example, it will be a lot of people moving into the community that we didn't have before. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Still eight hundred, eight hundred and forty-five homes is I have in my notes. Is that correct?
Eight seventy, I believe.
Eight seventy? Okay.
And that, those won't all be, you know, this fall. Those will be over an extended period of time, so that does seem like a daunting number, but it is over 262 acres, and nobody builds 800 homes at one time. It's over an extended period of time where they take a chunk here and, you know, respond to market needs and so forth, so.
Okay.
In that timeline, you expect to be over how long, sir?
You know, I don't have any crystal ball that can tell me that. I would say that you'd be looking at a period of, to final completion, seven to ten years. It would, would be my guess, right? Like, with, you never know when a 2000, you know, back in 2015, the City of London had one new home permit, right? Like, one. No one would have guessed that, you know, in 2010, so I think it's hard to project with that crystal ball, but I would say that it will be a, a seven to ten-year period before all of those homes will get built.
And you have multiple builders involved or will have multiple builders?
We do. We, we have, we have all of this land under contract, and we have multiple builders involved, and each of those builders are both excited about coming to London. One of them is here with us tonight that you can hear from, and they're also afraid of London, to be completely fair, because Arbor Homes has done an amazing job in developing London Landing, but they're the first such builder to do, you know, kind of what, what they've done, and so these other builders are saying, "Hey, we see what's happening in London. We know what's happening in central Ohio. We believe that we can make this happen in London, but we've got to make it special." And so I can tell you that if you talk to Max, Max Block with MI Homes, who's sitting in the front row, Max and I have lots and lots of discussions, and his discussion is, "Paul, make it special. Paul, make it unique. Paul, make it remarkable," because that's what it's going to take to make London, to grab, you know, to grab people's attention to bring them to London, and, and that's our commitment. When you see the entry features, when you see what this community is going to look like, I, I don't need to point you much farther than saying, "Look at the Butcher Block. Look at Sovereign Village. Look at Bluebird," and compare that to anything else we've seen in London before. And people come to those places and they say, "I can't believe I'm in London," and I hope to redefine that to a large extent and say, "You know, I'm not surprised it's in London, because this is a place where we're doing special and important things."
Can I just ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
So, and, and this is definitely up for correction, anybody who wants to correct me. So Lexington Green, we, somewhere along the way, as a government body, we approved that, and it seemed like nothing flourished from that, and so then, now you've bought it, right? So what do you plan to do differently than the previous owners to make sure that we're, we're not going down that same road of, we're, we want to build 800, it was what, 850 before? We want to build 850, but nothing ever flourished from it. What are you going to do different?
Well, Councilman, I, I think that's a very astute question, first off. I mean, I think it's a very astute question. There's a difference. I mean, I think there's a material difference, and I don't mean this in any kind of disparaging way, but MTB was the vision of a visionary by the name of Macy Block, okay? Macy Block wrote a personal check for every acre of ground he bought in this community, and I applaud, like, that guy's vision. I never met him, but I applaud his vision. He sadly passed away. Upon his death, his children inherited that land. They didn't invest in that land, okay? They inherited that land. And I asked Brad Block, when he was selling it, "Why are you selling this land?" He said, "This is my dad's vision. It was never my vision." In other words, he inherited it, I invested in it, and you're going to see a material difference between my investment and his inheritance, and I think that that should sum it up in the minds of anyone, and I know that there's lots of people in this community say, "We've heard a lot before, but what have we seen," right? But here's what I'll tell you. If we get the approval tonight, you'll see dirt move this fall. You'll see houses built next spring, right? Like, that's what's going to happen, and I say that as an investor with a deep interest in the integrity and the fabric of this community. Now, people can say what they may about Paul Gross. Most of them don't know me. I don't mind what they have to say. Everyone's entitled to their own opinion, but I dare say that if you look at the things that I've brought to this community, the things that I've built in this community, I've made it a better place. I've made it a better place for my family. I better made, I've made it a better place for this community, and I'm going to make it a better place when we look at Johnson's Creek, and I'm going to make it a better place in a way that will astound, I think, everyone on council and everyone in this community, and do so in a way that makes this entire community proud as an investor, not someone who inherits it, right? There is a different, there is, there is different skin in the game when you're an investor and you say, "Hey, I'm going to cough up my own fortunes to make this land what this community needs," and when I looked at it, I mean, I, this guy here, civil engineer, one of the smartest guys I know, okay? But I can tell you what he doesn't know is Madison County in London, Ohio, and that's not disparaging, right? He doesn't know what happens on a Friday night when you all put me out of business because our football team scores 60 points over our opponents and I have to give food away at the Butcher Block. I, I say that jokingly, right? But that there's a certain culture and a certain fabric that you know when you live here. He doesn't know what traffic looks like on Kenny Boulevard. He doesn't know what traffic looks like on Lafayette Street on Friday night, right? I understand those things, and so when I go to develop something, my wheels are always spinning. How can we bring more people into the community while still making it a better place for everybody to, to live? Because just having more doesn't make it better, right? Having more doesn't make it better. Making it better sometimes requires more, right? Like, when I built the Butcher Block, I remember people sitting in at the Planning Commission saying, "I'm afraid he's going to bring a lot of traffic to Highway 56," and I remember responding, "I'm afraid I won't," right? Like, I, I need traffic in order to make a restaurant successful. If we don't have, if we don't have traffic, we don't have a successful restaurant, right? And if we don't have people, we're never going to have an Oldies. If we don't have an Oldies, we're stuck and relinquished to our current options, right? And we, we've got, we've, we've got to find that balance to where we keep our hometown nature and our hometown spirit, but we have the amenities that come with it, and that's, that's the balancing act that all of us need. I, I remember going door to door with this particular project. When I went door to door and left a pamphlet at every door, the people immediately, you know, connected to it. We had, I don't know, I didn't count them, 50 people, let's say, at the Butcher Block, and one lady said, "Well, our hospital doesn't even deliver babies. Why would anyone want to move here?" I said, "Isn't that a fascinating question? Do you think if we had more babies, our hospital might deliver them here? Or do we have so few that we're limiting the services that we can provide our community?" Because there is a balance between the services you can provide your community and the number of people it takes to support those services. And I would respectfully submit that London has been stagnant for too long, and we haven't had the services that would best serve our community, and I'd like to bring some of those services to the community so that we can still enjoy the quality of life that we have, but, you know, have more vibrance, you know, in, in what we do, and, and, you know, listen, this council's not, not naive to the fact that we have needs for fire and police, but we can't get the community to say, "I'll give you one more thing," right? So we need to, we need to change the dynamic a little bit, right? And so I'm suggesting that this would be a very, very positive change for this community. When I built Sovereign Village, there were lots of naysayers. You weren't here to be a part of that, but there were lots of naysayers. I don't think there's a single person that drives down Sovereign Village today and says, "Oh, my goodness, I can't believe this burden to the community." I think there's a lot of people that drive down there and say, "Holy shit, this is a really neat place," and look at all of the income tax we're generating as a result of what we've got here that a private develop, a private developer invested in our community. So I, I appreciate your consideration, and, and I'm happy to address further questions, but I'm super excited about what this will do, and when I tell you that we will do it in the right way, I will let my track record serve as my past, and I will let this development serve as my future, and you're going to like my future even more than you hopefully appreciate my past.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gross. There may be more questions for you in a moment. Mr. Smith, did you have anything?
Nope.
Nope. So we have some new faces here tonight. This is a public hearing. You did not have to sign it, sign in, pardon me, sign in to speak at a public hearing. If any of you would like to come up, speak, and address this, you're welcome to do so at this time.
Raymond Anthony, 521 Eaton. Mr. Gross, during your presentation, you kept many, mentioning the word "special" about this place, and you said it was going to be very unique to other areas. Other than the homes, what is going to be so special about this place, so unique compared to other housing developments?
Do you have any answer now? I don't know. Do you have additional questions?
No, that was my question.
Or do you want, do you want to share the microphone? If you have more, you can come back up.
No, that's the only question that I had.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. We're going to ask and see if anybody, anybody else here wants to come up and speak on this tonight. Okay? Mr. Gross, if you'd like to, you can reply to Mr. Anthony, please.
Thank, thank you for the question. With, with a public hearing, I don't try to respond and tell everyone's given their feedback, so I wasn't trying to dismiss your question. So, you know, entryway features, like how, you know, if you go to Sovereign Village, for instance, there's a $250,000 entryway that creates a grand opening, right? A grand entry, not a grand opening. We had a grand opening a couple of years ago, but there's entryway features that, that establish a set off that makes it very unique, right? We have somewhere, is it 28% West, 26%? More than a quarter of the real estate is going to be left in green space. So a significant amount of the real estate is going to be left in green space, and I think what I'm probably most proud of, when I talk to the residents that live in Chevington and Amherst, do I have the names right? Chevington and Amherst? The plan known as Lexington Green, which was passed by this council and could have easily been pursued, right? Like, it wouldn't have required anything to pursue that. That plan butted up home to home. Your backyard is my backyard, and we're going to share it, and you can put up a fence, or you don't have to put up a fence. The number-one thing that I heard when I sat down with resident after resident after resident is, I know I got a cornfield or soybean field, but I knew that wasn't mine. I knew that was always zone, P U D. This is not a zoning change we're talking about here. We're talking about complying with the zoning. It's already in place. I mean, I don't want to look at my neighbor's dog, right? I just want a little bit of space. And I think one of the most special things that we've done, and it's not, it's not normal in housing developments, is to take a nice chunk of space that I own and to give it to the homeowners association at no cost and put in a green zone between the existing landowners and the new landowners and have walking paths and green space to say, "Hey, we're going to create a buffer." Yeah, you don't get to take title to the land next to you, but doggone it, I'm going to do everything I can to give you some serenity so that new housing isn't invasive. I mean, it's always going to feel that way. I get it. It's not cornfields. It's not, you know, when, when we take the beans off, I have people complain that the dust is coming on their house, right? So there's, there's complaints when there's soybeans, and there's complaints when there's houses. There's always going to be neighbor, neighbor, but I don't know of another project anywhere in central Ohio where they've said, "Okay, we're going to put a buffer between," because it's, it's unmonetized, right? Like, I paid a lot of money for that land, and I've, I've taken 26% of it, said, "We're not going to monetize any of that. We're going to put in green space. We're going to put in walking trails. We're going to put in, you know, a buffer so that your backyard isn't my backyard. We've got some space in between us and to give us that." And there is, there is an extraordinary abundance of green space in this particular area that makes it special, and Max is here with MI Homes, and you know what? D R Horton is one of the builders. MI Homes is one of the builders. I'm proud of both of them, but you know what they each said? "I don't want to look at his development. I don't want to look at their development." They said, "Give us some space between those developments." So even though it's a brand-new development with two different home builders, we're giving space so that people aren't feeling encroached upon, and we're trying to do this in a special way. When we look at the old plan, Lexington Green, compared to the new plan, Johnson's Creek, we went and put an entrance onto 38 to relieve traffic so that people could get out on 38, get on 40, and go to the east or the west to get the heck out of town without burdening Kenny Boulevard, right? Now, people will be on Kenny Boulevard. Kenny Boulevard's got curb cuts all the way down through this subdivision. It was planned, designed, and intended for that, but we're trying to provide relief mechanisms so that people don't have to go there during a school zone or what have you. So there's lots of little nuances that are completely unnecessary and very costly, but it's a part, it's a part of being a good neighbor, and, you know, listen, you can, you can say, "I wish you'd have painted the fence black," and "I painted it dark brown," or what have you, but at the end of the day, I don't, I can't tell you how many different iterations we've gone through based on feedback that we got from people before we had to do, and we didn't have to do one of those things, by the way. We did every one of those things because of the feedback that we got from neighbors in a collaborative basis and a collaborative effort, because I live in this town and I love this town, and I want this town to be special, and yes, each of those little nuances matters, and there ain't been a $650,000 house sold in this town, as far as I know, okay? So this is special in the sense that we're putting up structures and homes that are different than have ever been built here, and, and I'm dang proud of that. I'm dang proud of that, okay? So I hope that answers your questions, but all of those things matter, each of them a little bit at a time.
Thank you, sir. So this will come up under old business. There will be a chance to ask additional questions. If you look at your attachments, council members, they have their maps in there, are attached to our legislation. They brought that with them, and I believe the clerk said he had access. Do we have those or not, Mr. Clerk, to put up on the board later?
We can try.
We can try, unless anybody needed to see those now? Okay. We'll accept a motion to leave the... Accept the motion to leave the, um, public meeting or public hearing and enter back into a regular meeting. That's a motion by, by Mr., who had the first?
Mr. Norman.
Oh, Mr. Hayes, the second. All in favor of exiting the public hearing portion of the meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Mr. President?
Okay, on to communications and announcements. We have none. Audience concerns. Uh, we do have one tonight. Clarissa Ramy? If you could please come up and state your name and address, please.
My name is Clarissa Ramy and I'm with the London Strawberry Festival. Um, so we, I just wanted to come here tonight as a representative for them to let you guys all know that we have a complete new board of officers. Um, minus John, he is still our president. But the rest of them are all new. I'm your new Queens director. Um, we have met with the 1811 group, talked to a lot of the business owners about the new changes that are coming. Um, we're starting from the ground up. So this is definitely, um, a work in progress. And we hope to have patience with us and we're excited to work with everybody. But we just wanted to make that known and let everybody know that the Strawberry Festival is completely getting, um, ground up, new everything. Um, and if you have any questions going forward, our secretary does have a copy of, um, the new officers, their phone numbers, emails and that kinda stuff. So you can message the Facebook page to get that from her. But yeah.
I've heard some good things, so.
Thank you, yeah.
Close to a couple of people. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Can you share with us your next public meeting? When and what time?
Yes, so our public meetings are the last, I think it's the last Tuesday. Am I correct? The last Tuesday of, sorry, I do the Queens program, so I have a meeting with them too. And sometimes I get them confused. Um, but it's the last Tuesday of every month at seven, correct? Yes, seven.
Where is that held?
At the engineer's office.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto committee reports. Greg?
Personnel and Finance Committee report. So there's gonna be a number of things that come before council tonight, his new business. However, there's a couple of things I do wanna mention. Uh, first of all, the Tax Department has reported that the, uh, income tax for the year in the general fund is up about 5% and in the fire fund is up 4.8%. Uh, if you don't know this, they have just recently gotten some software. They can now do, uh, e-filing for people. And I was hoping they would get that information out to people somehow to let them know that they can do that, maybe take some of the stresses off people. The Otters update consisted of the monthly and year-to-date expenses. The revenue for the year or for the month was of, pardon me, the month of August was $1,168,714. Expenses, $1,202,209. Those are rounded to the, to the nearest dollar. Uh, overall revenues, $13,444,265. And the expenses are $17,295,745. And remember, 6.3 or 6.2 million dollars was transferred out, uh, to Mid-Ohio as part of our expenses. So that won't, I really think that should probably be taken out of this. It was never something that we were gonna use for general fund anyway. Uh, a couple of suggestions we're gonna have tonight. We're gonna have, um, a piece of old business comes up about the fire department that Council with Norman sponsored. So we'll talk about that here in a little bit. Bike racks, council supplies, things like these. These are all, uh, going to be part of what we're doing tonight. We did have a discussion, just as a general discussion, and maybe council would like to share some insight maybe later. Um, I would really like to see our capital improvement, improvements project, especially when it comes to roads, be considered now and set aside money this year instead of waiting until, uh, January for capital improvements. At that point, if we do it in January, it has the two or three readings. And whether or not we have to wait, we could be into March or April before we can accept bids. And we're always behind the eight ball if we do that. If we started a little earlier and we set aside money, even if it's just for the roads, at least those projects can be, can start earlier and we can get the bids processed early enough that we're not gonna be left with whatever else is left out there, you know, with contractors. So that's something that we brought up. The administration wasn't entirely in favor of that this year, but I think it's something we can still look at. So we are moving our normal meeting date, um, which traditionally was the first Monday after the first council meeting. But because of the way these months are running, we would be meeting two days or day, day or two prior to the other two committees and have to wait 30 days almost. So we're gonna move our meeting to October 21st at 5:30 PM next door. And that'll be after the other two committees go. So if anything comes to the committees, we can address it a little quicker. That's all I have.
Brent?
Attended the Public Service and the Public Safety on account. And I'll do the Parks and Rec report. The Swim Pool stayed open until the first of September because of the heat wave. They'll be installing new picnic tables and trash receptacles soon. I think they're expecting them around the 20th. And they have a, that Cowling Park Pumpkin Palooza, October 12th, from 11 to 3 at Cowling Park. And then I have the, uh, fire report. The, uh, departmental EMS training, autism, ADHD, Asperger's syndrome through Ohio Health. Uh, they did a departmental EMS training, burn management, pediatric burns through Madison Health. And departmental fire training apparatus inventories. Hosted several students for ride times for tolls and grant paramedic class. Provided EMS services for high school football games and completed fire safety inspections for all schools.
Rich?
Safety Service Committee met on 9/10/2024. All my committee members were present. Uh, city representatives were also present. No community members were present. I called the meeting to order at 6 PM. Uh, minutes of the 8/13/2024 meeting were approved as written. Police report was given by Sergeant Harris for Chief Nickel. Mr. Stahl will give that to you momentarily. Uh, Chief Eads gave the fire and EMS report. Uh, Mr. McDaniel just gave that report to you. Under Safety Service Director, uh, we have two school properties that have been deeded over to the city. Uh, therefore, there's two easements, uh, to be allowed for the dentist office and the funeral home behind us. Uh, that legislation was approved to come to council by a 3-0 vote. Mr. Stahl will sponsor it. Uh, we also talked about DORA, which stands for Designated Outside Refreshment Area. I'm gonna let the mayor talk about that after I get done, if he would like. Um, he's got a little more info on it. We also talked about, uh, under building and zoning, two modifications and recodifying, uh, storage of junk vehicles. Uh, this legislation was also approved to come to council by a 3-0 vote. Mr. Stahl will also, uh, take care of that, sponsoring it. Under new business, we had none. Under old business, we had none. Uh, we adjourned at 6:18. Next Safety Service Committee meeting will take place on October the 8th, 2024 at 6 PM in the conference room next door.
Andy?
I attended the Finance Committee meeting also. Um, I don't have anything additional to add. Mr. Eads covered everything there.
John?
The Public Safety Committee briefing by Sergeant Harris. Xavier Mannville completed the OPTA certification by passing the state exam and was sworn in by Mayor Klosser. He is now in field training status. We are currently reviewing applications for police officers. They have two open positions for officers. We're continuing to work with USDA RD on the loan application with architects on the schematic design phase, as well as location, engineering and environmental phase. Officers recently completed force on force training led by our department instructors. They participated in the downtown market event held in South Main this past weekend. The Ohio Collaborative Advisory Board has completed the review of our policies and compliance with the Ohio standards and in the following categories: use of force, recruitment and hiring, body worn cameras, bias free policing, investigation of employee misconduct, vehicle pursuits, response to mass demonstrations, agency wellness, crisis intervention and property inevidence, and recertification process for spearheads by Sergeant Harris. We held our annual night, National Night Out at Cowling Park with various service organizations in the community participating. They did very well. They plan on expanding next year. We participated with London Schools and then welcomed back students to school with Columbus Crew's Stay in the Game program for the first day of school. The Safe Communities Dry Soap will get pulled over kickoff was held last month, as well as the Think Fast Drive Safety Education Program at London High School. Thank you.
All right, Michael?
I attended the Public Service Committee meeting. Um, I'm gonna give the Street Department report. Again, our street department is never not. Uh, some of the highlights are they fixed some equipment at the park. Uh, they're working on the third ward storm drain and sewer, storm sewer drain, sorry. They did a storm sewer inspection over on Cherry Street and they co-patched the basketball courts being added somewhere and will be using those. And then just miscellaneous, helped move the tax department, uh, worked on the North Main Waterline, replaced some traffic lights and, uh, tested some traffic light controls. Our next public service meeting will be October 8th, the room next door at 5 PM. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, on to city official reports. Mayor?
Good evening. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. I wanna start off talking about the Battle of the Cans Food Drive. That'll be taking place the week of September 30th and ending at the London versus Jonathan Alder game on Friday, October 4th. Bridges Community Action in partnership with London and Jonathan Alder School Districts will be holding a canned food drive, non-perishables. Students will be able to bring their non-perishable items to school from Monday, September 30th to Friday, September, or Friday, September, October 4th. Citizens will be able to drop items off here at City Hall, 20 South Main Street to help out that same week. The night of the big game in Plain City, people attending the football game can bring items in and London and Alder will both have their own table and they could drop the items off that day. Community Action will count all the items and the winner of who collected the most will be announced at halftime of that game. The winning school will receive bragging rights and a traveling trophy, but the biggest winners will be those in need. The City of London Parks and Recreation Department will be hosting an event, the Cowling Park Pumpkin Palooza. The event will be held at Cowling Park on Saturday, October 12th, from 11 AM to 3 PM. We have a lot of things scheduled for that free and fun family event. There'll be bounce houses, face painting, free pumpkins to decorate with stickers for the first hundred kids, mini pumpkin pie eating contests, free cotton candy, food trucks, hopefully a little mini goat petting zoo, sidewalk chalk area, Safety Services Touch a Truck and much more we're adding every day. Or Eve's adding stuff every day, I should say. We will also be inviting other local groups to participate and it should be a fun time. So please to make sure, check out the Facebook page. Facebook page, uh, for more details. Last week, we were able to complete the union contract negotiations with AFSMI. Tonight, you have that contract in front of you for your consideration. The contract will need to be ratified within 30 days. I would like to thank our team and also AFSMI for working so well together and being able to put a pretty good contract together in which both sides could agree. We will now be moving on to the fire and EMS and police negotiations for their unions. We have begun street repairs and I'd like to thank city council for their appropriation of money to get these roads done. There will be 46 total roads that'll be worked on. Nine roads will be crack sealed, 24 roads will be crack and micro sealed, eight roads will be cape and micro sealed and five will be cape sealed with Fibre Mat. We apologize for any inconvenience that this may have on the citizens as these roads are being repaired. We have sent out surveys to downtown businesses about the implementation of a DORA, a Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area in that, in the downtown area. We need to get feedback to see if this is what the businesses would like in that area. So far, we have received 33 responses and we sent out 60. And there's an overwhelming majority that have been in support of the DORA, which I believe 31 have been in support and two were not in support out of those 33 that have sent back their surveys. We will continue to get feedback and move through the process to see if this is a fit for London and the historic downtown area. I had the honor of presenting, um, the Daughters of the American Revolution with a proclamation for Constitution Week. I enjoy being able to do this every year to celebrate the completion and signing of the Constitution, which happened on September 17th, 1787. I was also able to participate in some nice events around the community as we talked about last time, Lemonade Day at London Elementary School, which celebrated the life and memory of Mrs. Carol Daniels. Farm Science Review was a lot of fun. They had perfect weather for that. Had a radio interview with Woody, Woody Johnson from New Country 1039 to highlight what's going on in London. And then had conversations with Business View Magazine as they're looking to do another story on London, another follow-up story about all the great things that are happening around here. Just remind everyone that the City of London Trick or Treat will be held on Halloween, Thursday, October 31st, from 6 PM to 8 PM. And there is no alternate, alternate date. If citizens are worried about weather, I encourage them to attend some of the trunk or treats that will be leading up to the 31st. I will be posting them on my mayor Facebook page as they come in. If a group is hosting a trunk or treat, please reach out to me and I will help get the word out. I believe last year, within the city limits, there were over a dozen trunk or treats. Now on to the Molo Fun Fact, which is number 205. That is a total number of points London Red Raider Varsity Team has scored in four games while holding their opponents to a total of 14 points. Tomorrow, they'll be traveling to Graham for their fifth regular season game. I'd like to wish some luck as they move forward throughout the season. There has also been a lot of other success in London sports and programs again this year. I remember we talked about it a lot last year with every, all the great things going on. All the teams seem to be doing very well. And actually, the Pride of London Marching Band just had their first competition where they came in first place in Class B. I'd like to wish all the students, athletes, nothing but success on and off the field. And they have been doing so well and like them to know that their hard work does not go unnoticed. So thank you for your time. Does anyone have any questions for me or any questions about tonight's legislation or anything that I spoke about?
Mr. Mayor, uh, an update on DORA or just a question about DORA? I know that in years past, we've had, uh, businesses downtown that have alcohol as part of their normal sales, that there's been some issues when someone tries to walk out of those businesses during one of our events, whether it was the Strawberry Festival or, uh, the Rhythm and Rib. If there's a DORA in place, would that allow patrons of those businesses to walk outside during those events?
So that would probably be a question for the law director. I'm not quite sure how that works with festivals. But I know that, um, what we're looking at is having cups made for the DORA. There'll be clear cups with our logo on them, explain the DORA. And then, right now, we're talking about they would have to purchase them through the city. We wouldn't upcharge them, but they'd have to purchase them through us. And so any participating business would have to use the plastic cups. You're not just gonna give somebody a, a bottle of beer and have them go walk on the street or get a brown bag and a 40 and have them walking up and down the street. But as for the festivals, that would be a question for Jennifer Hitt.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any questions about legislation tonight?
I have a question. I'm surprised. Um, you brought up the streets and, uh, and the progress that we're making on them. And, uh, Director Castle, Safety Service Director Castle. Safety Service Director Castle, sent me the list earlier today, and I was looking through it. Can you, I know you, you probably don't have a dollar amount, so I'll take whatever I can get. When I'm looking at this, it's, it splits them up in four different categories. It's crack and seal, and micro at 24 pounds, and then the next one's crack, crack seal only, crack seal, micro at 22 pounds, and then the very bottom one was cap seal, Fibre Mat, and micro at 22 pounds. I'm assuming there's price differences for each of these levels. As we go down, is the price higher? And if you don't know what the price is, do you have like a percentage of?
Well, yeah, it's just like anything, the more you do, the more it's going to cost, right? So, the crack sealing just itself is going to be the cheapest process out of the four, right? And then as you start adding these things, and then I do believe the one that has four or five roads, that the, the cape seal with the Fibre Mat, that would be the most expensive. That's why, that's why we're only doing five of those, and then we're able to do, I believe I reported, 24 roads will be crack and micro sealed, and then nine will be crack sealed.
So, I just want to say, I, I'm pretty impressed with what we've gotten done with the little bit of money that we had, because looking at, you know, we just had the roads graded, and when they graded them, you call, you're calling them streets, but I was looking at them more like sections.
Right.
And they graded us in 448 sections.
Yeah.
And this 900, we just used the 961, right? We didn't add to it. So it's, 961 got us all this done. That's what I thought. So, this 961 equals to about 25%. It's 113 sections of that graded, and I, you know, I'm pretty impressed that we were able to hit 25% of that list in such a short time. I think our Street Department and those who made up this list deserve some recognition for.
Yeah, no, I completely agree. You know, we brought that company in because we wanted, didn't want to be biased and have a third party come in and grade our streets. And then, you know, you guys understand how, how well Bill is when he works with these things, and being able to get the most bang for his buck, and he was able to get that worked out, to be able to get all those things done this year. And, you know, Councilman Eads talked about it, and we're excited for next year to, you know, hopefully get another million dollars and be able to do, do that again. I think you guys need to make sure you're talking to the Auditor's Office, though, about appropriating money this year to be rolled into next year. I don't know how that's exactly done, but first of the year, first thing you do in January, appropriate that money, and we can, we can jump on it. I mean, we're with you guys, we want to get our roads fixed.
And then, one more follow-up question. It's a follow-up question from last meeting. Did, were you able to get ahold of OHM and verify if they're going to at least make these meetings either public or record them?
Yeah, so we did speak to them, I'll let Rex, Rex spoke to them directly.
Not every meeting will be done that way. They said that they found that there's less interaction whenever recordings are done, so some of the stakeholder meetings, I think, was what they said, that they like to have ideas brought up, and they said they want to, you know, they want people to be free of bringing stuff up, they don't want to be bringing stuff up that might be of bad, you know, people might take it in bad light or something. I don't know what they meant by it, but they said that they had less participation with, with recording, so they didn't want to do those, but when we get into some of the other committee meetings, they said they could definitely do that.
They actually even spoke about, you know, because it's difficult to, in that setting, to have a recording and, you know, be able to hear everybody, you know, everybody's sitting at tables and have enough microphones and things like that, and they said that what they have seen is people just do a Facebook Live, and they just do a Facebook, and so that's what we're looking to do, where we would set up and do a Facebook Live through the city's Facebook page and go from there. And they said that that's kind of what they've seen in the past and what's worked out the best.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one other thing. I'm going to hit the, let's address the elephant in the room a little bit. I'm glad these roads are going to be repaired. It seems like there was some outcry over the last couple of days about signage and notices going to people. So it brings up a couple of points for me. I know it's going to be an inexact way to do that. I see where someone had posted on Facebook, you know, that they thought there should be a 72-hour requirement in the signage, how big it's supposed to be and where it's supposed to be. My concern, my biggest concern is we're only using Facebook. And Facebook's not the end-all-be-all. There's people that aren't on it, there's people that only look at it occasionally, there's people that don't follow the City of London or anything like that. So if we're only using Facebook, I think we, we lose people that aren't going to see that. I looked to see if it was on the city website, I don't see it on the city website as a notice that we should have out there that these roads are going to be repaired and when to give people notification. I just want to know, how are we going to move forward with this so that we can get the most people, the knowledge that they need to have that their road's about to be done if they can't park on their road?
Okay, so the first thing is that we're talking to the company themselves about when they're putting their signs out. Those, that's going to be the biggest way to let people know, right? So if you go home and there's a red sign in the right of way, right? So, and, but being able, I just talked to Eve, and we'll find a place to put it on the website and pump it out on the app. I, I mean, it's just tough, you know, to try to get this information out, and people have to be willing to go and try to find that information, but, you know, we'll do what we can to try to get that out for them.
Okay. I appreciate that, and glad we brought it up now and didn't wait till roundtable.
Okay. Anything else for me? Any other questions for me?
Okay.
Thank you.
Rex, do you have anything? We'll go on to old business, and I'll let Greg get this one started.
So we'll move on to old business, the fifth reading of Resolution 15924. Accepting motion to read by title and number?
So moved, second.
Resolution 15924, a resolution adopting the recommendations of the Planning Commission Johnson Street subdivision, parcel number 3103399 dot zero zero one.
So back to this, while we did have the public hearing earlier, this is the official part of the meeting in which we'll make a decision. Since Shannon Trainor's not here tonight, she was the sponsor, I'm going to go over a couple of quick things that went through Finance Committee. We do have the Planning Commission recommendation form that each council member should have. I'll just address a couple of things on here. It was July 11th, 2024, this was approved by the Planning Commission. It says all lots should meet or exceed the 5,625 square foot. I don't know what that is, if that's, would relate to an R3 or R4, I don't know. It's a PUD, I know they don't have to do that, you said it's an R3, so that square footage is equal to an R3 then. The PUD plan must comply with stormwater regulations. We can't, we don't have the maps up, but maybe we'll get the maps up, there's plenty, and as you look through our, our information here, and I have a different, I don't know if I brought it with me, but from the original meeting that this was brought to us, it showed the different amounts of, or places where stormwater is going to be, so retention ponds. There's lots of retention ponds, I don't know how many there are overall, but we're supposed to meet, you're supposed to meet that requirement, and then all other requirements listed on the city's codified section of 126210 for the final development plan. So those things have been addressed already at the Planning Commission, and it comes before us tonight. We do have the maps that we can see on ours, they're a little jacked up and a little hard to read, but does anybody have any further questions, comments, concerns, anything they want to bring up with Mr. Gross?
I have a question, but it's to us mainly. Through this process, we were, we kind of dropped the ball, and we were supposed to have this public hearing at our first month of the meeting, first meeting of the month, and we ended up having to push it back because we kind of dropped the ball and didn't get it where it needs to go. And because of that, my question is, is that, is that delay going to delay you? And if so, should we amend this to have an emergency clause so that it doesn't have to wait the 30 days? Because we've already added half a month because we didn't have the hearing at the beginning of that month. Any comments? Or thoughts?
Well, ask Mr. Gross if that's really been, if it's that much of a, of a deal breaker, if that's much of a problem. Originally, you said that, you know, work wouldn't start until the beans come off. I know they're coming off now, every place else, and also, I think you could probably start to move dirt if you want to without this plan being in effect completely, because I think there's things that you can do, but I would ask if you would want to address that, Mr. Councilman Norman's question at all.
Thank you for that consideration. Timing is of the essence, obviously, because we are in a dry period, which you don't always get, right? Like, so we are weather dependent. The beans have been harvested, so we are only waiting on council and the, the local government to move this thing forward. So, I probably am a little bit naive, to be honest, like, my understanding was that once this is approved, we would take it to Planning Commission to get the final approval for that at their next meeting, is that right? And then once that's completed, we're ready to move dirt? And if that's the case, I think we can manage through the process with that, with that process, but, but I certainly do appreciate that because dry weather is so critical, right? Like you, we don't know when the next hurricane's going to come up the Gulf and we'll get the next Ike like we had in 2007 or whenever it was, but, but i- is it, is it true that once it's approved here tonight, if provided it's approved here tonight, that it then goes to Planning Commission for the final approval and then we can move dirt? Is that?
So, today is the 19th. It would be close, it would be close, because the Planning Commission, oh, wait a minute. No, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission meeting's going to be Wednesday, the 9th, so it'll be less than 30 days. I know Greg said, you know, you can still move dirt, but that would, if, if something was to happen and somebody was to try to reverse this, you, it would be, you know.
Headache.
A headache, yeah. So, but, yeah, it, but that is the process that goes to council, and then it comes back to Planning Commission for the final approval, and then, at that point, go.
All, all I can say is we would appreciate any consideration possible. We started this process very early on, we've hired really the best engineering firm that we could find. And, you know, you do hit a window, whether the weather stays dry or gets wet, you get a window in the winter where we, we can't do anything, right? Like, there, there are certain times and it just kind of shuts things down, so.
Yes.
Whatever it can be done to expedite, it would be appreciated, but I don't, I don't know the internal procedures as well as those of you.
So just to let you guys know, this was, I thought at first maybe it was supposed to be read in October, but either way, it was, it was supposed to be read on the 5th of September, then it was going to come to the September 12th Planning Commission meeting. So now, having to do this on the 3rd Thursday, we have to wait until the 9th of October, so, you know, it'll be definitely a full month, we've already backed him up, because it should have been done and passed on the 12th instead of the 9th of October.
Why make a motion that we add the emergency measure to this legislation?
We have a motion on the floor to amend the legislation to add the, to waive the 30-day rule.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none? All, we'll, we'll do a roll call, please.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
No.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Well, there we go.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
I'm going to abstain due to my residence being proximally to the planned development area.
Mr. McDaniel?
I'd probably better do the same.
Uh, Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Well, or? I said yes, Rich said yes, Michael said yes, John Stahl said yes.
Okay. And two, and two absences.
Very good.
Yes.
15924 has been approved.
Mr. President?
There he is.
Okay, on to the third reading, Resolution 170-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved, second.
Resolution 17024, a resolution increasing appropriations, the city administration would like to purchase the software program Civic Plus.
So this has to do with the software Civic Plus to help kind of streamline park or rec department needs, and also could be applied to various city services, then Ms. Reed Love was just going to add some information on that?
Well, let's get a microphone. If that one doesn't work, grab the other one, please. There we go.
Um, I handed y'all a quote tonight. I was able to meet with our Civic Plus representative late yesterday and again today, and discuss with them our needs and their willingness to work with us, and they are agreeing to honor the original discount if we move forward with Civic Plus.
So the original discount brings the total price to $7,088?
Correct.
Do we know what changed their mind?
Me.
You? Okay.
Good job.
That worked. That worked. Well, thank you for going to bat for the City of London to save us $6,000. That was probably an unnecessary charge in my mind. And I'll be honest, Ms. Reed Love, had this moved forward tonight with the extra $6,000, I would have said no as my personal vote, because I don't believe it's good business on their part to do that. But I do believe it's good business on their part to honor the original agreement, so thank you.
You're welcome. One of the other things that they're willing to honor because of your interest in other Civic Plus software, is they would like to discuss a bundle discount if the city would like to purchase future Civic Plus software. That does not have to be decided tonight, there is time for that. I just wanted to let you know that that was something they said as well.
So, let me address that for just a minute. I had went on the, onto the website and looked around at all of the things they do. We've discussed this somewhat at the last meeting here, we discussed it somewhat at the finance meeting, there's lots of programs they have. I personally think there's a number of programs that would probably be very beneficial to the city to have those programs available to us. One was a 311 system which kept information, I thought that would be very beneficial. And the other thing that I thought was going to be, I was most interested in, was a meeting and agendas module. I sat through a presentation, it kind of failed. We do have videos that I can share the link, that we can watch the videos on how this is supposed to work. I really thought it would make life
like to purchase future Civic Plus software. That does not have to be decided tonight. There is time for that. I just wanted to let you know that that was something they said as well.
So, let me address that for just a minute. I had went on the, onto the website and looked around at all of the things they do. We've discussed this somewhat at the last meeting here. We discussed it somewhat at the finance meeting. There's lots of programs they have. I personally think there's a number of programs that would probably be very beneficial to the city to have those programs available to us. One was a 3-1-1 system, which kept information. I thought that would be very beneficial. And the other thing that I thought was going to be, I was most interested in, was a meeting and agendas module. I sat through a presentation, it kind of failed. We do have videos that I can share the link, that we can watch the videos on how this is supposed to work. I really thought it would make life easier on the clerk, and make life easier for everyone, because all of the information would be put in a place that we could all find it, we could share it, and other committees, and, and basically, anybody in the city that met, whether it's the Planning Commission, or anyone else, they could use the same software, I believe, to put all of these things in one place. But that's something we can discuss later. They mentioned to me at that point, a bundle discount. I did get the email today that mentions, "Well, if you do it by the end of the year, we'll give you a bundle discount." But that's not what they said in the original conversation. There was no timeline, but I'm not too worried about that right now. But I was going to push tonight, so thank you for this, but I was going to push tonight that, before we made that decision, to see if there was anything else that we wanted to do in one fell swoop, because I think there's other things we need. But, because they've honored this price, that's why it's before us tonight.
Ms. Reed Love?
Yes, Mr. Reed.
I'm looking at this, and it's saying that it expires on 9/27. And I'm looking at the resolution, it does not have an emergency clause on it. If we do not put an emergency clause on it, are they willing to wait the thirty days for it to take effect?
Yeah. That, that expiration date is not solid. That was just to get that out to me two hours before council.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and on their, their payment list, on that first page, it says payment net thirty. So, they'll give us the thirty.
I just want to make sure.
Yep, we're good.
Did I make a motion we adopt?
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
No.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Okay, resolution 170-24 is passed. Onto a second reading. Ordinance 171-24, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 171-24, an ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption and publication of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances, repealing ordinances in conflict therewith, declaring an emergency.
So, this is updating legislation from the past two years to enter it onto the website, and then into our physical book that the city has with legislation. I did talk to the law director, and she has completed review of the packet we were given, and didn't see any issues with it.
I make a motion we adopt.
It's only a second reading?
It's only a second reading? Oh, then I have to suspend, I'm sorry. I make a motion we suspend, sorry. I was all excited.
I'll second.
I tell you what, it's definitely dry reading, because I, I went through the whole thing, too, and it's just a bunch of dry reading.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
No.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms... Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Motion to adopt?
Nope, doesn't.
Need six.
Stay on for a third reading.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, on to ordinance 172-24, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 172-24, an ordinance amending section 1062 of the codified ordinances.
Uh, 172 is an ordinance that's amending section 1062, which is basically our park, our park rules. They were, they were supposed to have made a amendment, or a change to it, but they, they haven't yet. So, I, I'm going to make the motion that we amend the section where it talks about not having carts and stuff on the pathways or in the park to include baby and pet strollers, because it's not on there. It's not, they're not listed. I'm sorry?
Do we include or exclude?
To include it, because it's, they're, they're not listed on there. And during the, during the meeting, they were going to change it and bring it to us, changed, but they never changed it, so.
Are you meaning to allow?
To allow.
On the car, on the walking path?
Yes, because right now, it says no, only wheelchairs and, like...
So, just in the third bullet point, wheelchairs and medical scooters are allowed?
Yeah, right, that's...
So, you want to, you want to include?
I want to amend that, to include baby strollers, pet strollers, whatever you want to call them.
What about, why doesn't they bring food and stuff in?
I'm just, I, I think they should be allowed, but...
I mean, reading this, I'm thinking bicycles, motorcycles, something that you ride on. I mean...
I, I, I'm just saying what we discussed during, during the meeting, that they felt it needed to be added, but it was never...
Okay, but if you guys, you know, want to amend it and add it, that's fine, too.
Would we have to put something in there about electric bicycles, mopeds?
No, because wheeled vehi, wheeled vehicles, toys, cycles.
Are not to be written. So, this is changing to what is allowed?
Correct, that's what I'm saying. We have to put anything in there not allowed, so that's good. Okay.
All right, so the amendment would be to allow baby and pet strollers in parks.
Make that motion?
I did.
I'll second.
Quiet down there tonight, can't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Speak up!
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms... Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Okay, that has been amended?
I'd also make a motion to suspend the three reading rules.
I'll second.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
No.
Mr. Hayes?
We're getting into some fall weather. Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
No.
Mr. Norman?
Okay, suspension has failed. That will stay on. Onto resolution 173-24, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 173-24, a resolution of increasing appropriations.
This is appropriating money to purchase a DuraPatch machine to fix our roads. And I guess they've been needing it for a couple of years, so... Let's fix the roads.
Fixing roads. So, this doesn't have the from, so this is coming from general fund? Are we appropriating? The legislation doesn't?
It's not.
It's Capitol Street.
Does it say Capitol Street?
Are we, during this public service meeting, Bill said that something about a certain machine not being available? So, this will just be for a DuraPatch machine? And do we have enough? Because he said that the price of it went up significantly, so is this going to...
Because they put them out separate. I think the, the crack sealer is about $100,002, so, yeah, I think there should be enough for DuraPatch.
Do, do we need both machines? Should it be amended to include both machines?
You'd have to increase the amount, and you'd have to ask Bill on that. I think he was, he, his main need was the DuraPatch, and he was hoping to get a combined unit, but they don't offer it. So, I think the main thing was he needed a DuraPatch. Because that's what he has now, and that's what's not working very well.
Get a DuraPatch.
Mm-hmm. How soon will we get that, if we approve it?
I don't know if it's something they have in stock, or if you've got to wait on it, Rich, I don't know. If it's like other things, probably a month, or month, thirty, sixty days, probably.
He's not planning on using it this year.
He's not? Okay, so he's not necessarily planning on using it this year? Okay. Probably not.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Onto resolution 174-24, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 174-24, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into contract.
And this is going to allow Rex to purchase it off the government website, right?
Yeah, those will wait for the appropriations.
Okay. Onto tabled legislation. Resolution 123-24, can I get a motion to read by title?
So, so moved.
Yeah, do we have to make a motion to take it off the table?
No, it was postponed to this date. So, it's on, it's on today's agenda, it was postponed to this date.
I'll make sure, thank you.
Resolution 123-24, a resolution authorizing the auditor to increase appropriations and transfer funds.
Okay, so I brought this right after the election, because there was concern that we might not have enough funding for our fire and EMS department. Turns out, after discussions with administration, the Safety Service Director, and, most importantly, the chief himself, they seem to think they'll be in okay for the rest of the year. And even if, talking to the chief, even if something were to happen, he feels he has enough, that if he had to dip below what he has, that they'd be able to do it, and then we, through the proper process, we'd be able to replenish him. So, the suggestion is that we put it up for adoption, but fail it?
No. Oh, well, you finish your part.
We could keep it, but, you know, we don't really need to. They're in good shape.
Okay, Mr. President, I believe at that meeting, we discussed the fact that we might need to look at an additional $200,000, as we did this year moving forward. But things were still a little bit uncertain. They did have a carryover balance at the end of August, $1,059,000. They still have a pension payment to make, but they are willing, are waiting on some, some billing money that we haven't received yet, because the billing company failed. They have a new billing company, they think they can get this back. I believe at that meeting, we discussed postponing this again until a later meeting, because at that point, if we did it, we would still be on the third reading, we wouldn't have to go through the entire process again. But, I mean, at this point, I felt pretty comfortable. I talked to the fire chief a little bit, and we talked at the meeting, and, and I'm just going to ask Rex's suggestion at this point. We can postpone until, let's say, the November 7th meeting, have another six weeks to figure it out, or...
That's purely up to counsel, if you want to. What was discussed was putting in the budget for next year, a transfer of $200,000, just like we did this year, and just like we did the year before. That helps support the fire fund. It is all of ours, the auditors, myself, and the chief's feelings that we should not need any more funds for this year, especially if we get the billings, if the billing company gets caught up and gets the insurance collections coming back to the levels that we were having before the previous collection company was hacked and lost all of our records, and we haven't really received adequate insurance payments now for, what, about six months, I think I reported?
I, I think so. Didn't you say that we, you thought we're down like $125,000 to $140,000 in our collections because of that, that issue?
Yes, exactly.
So, that's what's making it a little bit more tight than maybe it should be.
Well, as it reads, the resolution requests that we move $600,000 to, so, to the fire EMS, so are we postponing, or are we...
Was this actually, I just, I need to know, because I don't remember now. Whoever put this in, thank you for remembering to put this in, I don't know.
Michael.
Michael, very good.
But this would, this would have been, I believe, the third reading.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Okay, this is the third reading, okay.
It's at least the third, I think it might be the fourth, because I think it took us...
Because I looked back, at first, I saw it was the second reading.
Right, it just, where it falls in the agenda, so I couldn't remember what it was.
Yeah, it's definitely third, if not.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
A second.
Mr. McDaniel?
No.
Mr. Norman?
No.
Mr. Stahl?
No.
Mr. Reed?
No.
Mr. Hayes?
No.
Mr. Hitt?
No.
Okay, resolution 123-24 has failed. Onto new business, resolution 175-24, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 175-24, resolution decreasing appropriations.
Okay, this is related to the money that we appropriated for park picnic tables and trashcans for Merrimack Park and a few other locations around town. It actually only cost $13,054.29, and that's why the decrease of $8,945.71, based on the actual cost.
Most of that was attributed to shipping costs for a lot less than we thought they were going to be. So, they have an abundance of money, however, they still want to spend it. We felt that it was probably best to decrease this now, and we can re-spend it in the next
Yeah, the difference would be reflected in the next piece of legislation, which would be used for other materials around town, which I can go into that when that comes up,
Any other discussion?
Well, I move that we adopt. Oh, I'm sorry, we'd have to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
I move that we suspend the rules.
I second.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Now, I'll move that we adopt.
I second.
I'm not used to this, everybody else does this.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 175-24 is passed. Onto resolution 176-24, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 176-24, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So, this is the difference that was left over from the $22,000 for the park picnic tables and trash barrels. And this is to be used for dog waste receptacles, bike racks? I thought there was one more thing. Is there one more thing to include? Okay, so those two things.
Dog racks.
Dog waste receptacles, and then bike rack, right?
I think they were talking about some, some more trash cans, is this the...
No, that's different. That's different. There's different pieces.
Different piece.
So, once again, just to go on what Mr. Hitt just said, $8,945.71 was left over from the previous piece that we didn't need. They do feel that there's a need for bike racks. We've had people question why, if we're a bike town, we don't have bike racks for people downtown. So, he's going to be able to purchase a number of bike racks. And dog waste stations, and I'm hoping they put them up some additional places so that... so that maybe even here in front of our park in front of the building here, someone's walking the dog, they could grab a bag if they need to. So I think the money's going to be well spent.
Any other discussion?
I make a motion that we suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Mr. Eats?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eats?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 176-24 is passed. Onto Resolution 177-24. Can I get motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 177-24, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So whereas we've expended our funds for office supplies, including these nice new chairs that we're also happy to have, we could run a little short if we have to do any mailings or anything. So it was proposed that we just increase that by a thousand dollars, just in case we do have to do mailings for any public meetings or anything like that. There's not an emergency clause. We think we're going to be okay. In case we decide just to leave this on and let it ride, I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Any other discussion? Okay, onto Resolution 178-24. Can I get motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 178-24, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So again, Ms. Trainer should have been here. She's the sponsor. And I even said I would sponsor something else because I felt bad that she sponsored so much and Councilman Hit. Well, since she's not here, the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Mission, also known as MORPC, we joined that last year or two years ago. I think it was just last year, just last year. Their dues are based somewhat on our population. The dues to join are 5,000 to renew our membership with MORPC. I questioned whether or not the administration felt this was a good expenditure. So MORPC is going to help with the comprehensive plan. We get so many hours a year from them, so they're going to help come run a couple of meetings. So it lessens our expense on that end. We did appropriate more money just in case if they run over. But we're going to get some free help this year, probably next year too, because we get so many hours per year. It depends on how it falls in the process. But the mayor felt that the information we got from them was invaluable, and he strongly suggested that we pay for this membership again.
Are we on a timeline with this?
I don't think so. I really don't. No, this is the mayor's. He gets those. He didn't really relay to me when it was due. So I don't know.
Can I get any other discussion? Okay, on to Resolution 179-24. Can I get motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 179-24, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So this is an increase in appropriations of 3,500. It's for trash receptacles around downtown. I don't know if he gave us a certain number of, how many that would purchase? Was it, do you remember, Greg? Was it four?
If I'm not mistaken, it was four or five.
I think it's four.
Yeah, they, we just don't have, in the downtown area, we don't have a trash can on every corner. And a lot of things get dropped on the ground. People don't carry it to the next trash can. So they just want to add to that. It'll, it'll help. We hope it'll help keep some of the trash off the streets downtown as all of these changes are being made, and the downtown's starting to look a lot better. It's just supposed to help that out. This is coming from the mayor's miscellaneous fund, so the mayor's paying for this.
Well, since he's paying for it, I make a motion, we suspend the three reading rule.
I'll second.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
No.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Eats?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
Nope, it failed.
All right.
Suspension has failed. Any other discussion on this? Okay, on to Ordinance 180-24. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 180-24, an ordinance amending Section 660 of the codified ordinance.
This ordinance one deals with the storage of junk vehicles.
Okay, in this, under Section A1, which, I'll read through this. So looking to see what changes are made where things get aligned, put through them. So many times through here, it looks like the word uncovered. "No person shall willfully leave a junk vehicle, motor vehicle uncovered in the open for more than 10 days," and we've removed the word uncovered. However, we still have that in Section 1A. I don't know if we need to change that or not. The sentence is junk motor vehicle means any vehicle, motor vehicle which is three years old or older, which, that blows me away, extensively damaged, such damage included, but not limited to, there's a number of things, with having a fair market value of less than 1,500 or less, that is left uncovered in the open on private property for more than 72 hours.
I didn't say it needs to be removed. That got missed.
We need to catch that too and remove that?
The thing is, the zoning inspector says he'll send a letter about them having junk vehicles, and then he sends them the ordinance that it references. Then they go, oh, well, then all I got to do is cover it, and they just go buy a $10 tar for the throw over. It's still unsightly to the properties. So he would, he requested that removed, and also he didn't want to send...
We also are removing the certified mail out of that also?
Yeah.
Okay.
So how enforceable is this going to be? I mean, if it's covered, are we...
Well, we can leave this on and have the law director give us a fresh copy that takes that out also.
Yeah. That'd be fine. I'll let her know.
And is this just for, I guess I wonder, how far are we going into somebody's yard? Is it, is this, if it's in their driveway, if they have it in their backyard and it's covered, does it, doesn't matter where it is? If it's, so if it's a junk car period, it can't set anywhere in the city? Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Or, but we are giving them a, what, a 72-hour grace period?
Yeah, they get a notice and they have, they have a timeframe to get that removed, or you can put it in your garage, if they have a garage.
And you, and you don't think we'll catch any, I mean, it just seems, it's going to be hard to enforce that for us to go on somebody's property and tell them.
Well, once we remove the covered part, it's going to be more enforceable because it'll be our ordinance that states that, and there'll be consequences for not complying.
What is the consequence? Is it, I missed that in it?
It's down here, yes.
Is it just a fine?
If the offender, it's a minor misdemeanor, first offense. If they've been previously convicted, it's a misdemeanor of the fourth degree. If they've been convicted of two or more, it's a misdemeanor of the third degree.
So it progresses. I mean, there's been times when people come and they pay the fine and they don't do anything about it. So Jennifer, I'll take them to court again. And then it gets to be more stern as to the consequences for it.
But that was already in the language.
Yeah.
Now, let's see, and I'm glad, I think we're going to leave this on because from what I understand, and people have said to me in the past that if it's covered, if you have a cover over it, that it was okay. Not necessarily in a garage. And if we're changing this, that it's, if it's been deemed a junk vehicle by somebody and they get a letter, it has to be in a garage. It can't be left on their property somewhere.
Correct. And this was brought forth again by the code enforcer. He's, you know, he feels like that there's certain contingent of people that skirt around our codified ordinances by basically covering a vehicle. It's either up on blocks, you know, it could be a wrecked vehicle. It could be anything.
I believe there's a house now that's got two vehicles that are junk vehicles. One's up on blocks, and then there's another one right beside it that's, it looks, it don't look good. I mean...
Okay, all right.
So this says the police chief, the council, or the zoning authority may send the notice?
It, 99% of the time ends up being the code, code enforcer that does that, zoning person.
Let's start sending notices.
That's, I mean...
Bring your list.
Bring your list.
I don't want to do that.
Wait, I can have her research that and have that taken off too.
I'd have her research that. I mean, I'm not saying council would, a council member would do that, but I wouldn't...
Well, I wonder...
Typing it up right now.
I wonder if, if we don't have a zoning person.
I mean, I'd rather have the police chief, Safety Service Director, or the zoning authority, which Safety Service is zoning authority.
Yeah. I don't think we need, I don't think we need that power.
Okay. Any other discussion on this one? Okay. Onto Resolution 181-24. Can I get motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 181-24, a resolution approving an easement.
181 and 182 are similar. The land next door that we own, part of, however, part of it belongs to the other people. We're not going to take it from them. Isn't that how it goes?
It's, it's property that's been utilized by other property owners for years. I'm assuming the school, this property initially belonged to the school. I'm assuming the school didn't have any issues with it. And then whenever the property swap came, when we gave the land exchange for the school buildings, those two parcels were missed to be transferred to the city. I happened to discover that they were still in the school's name when I was looking at the auditor's website to get parking spots mapped out for when we got our parking lot resealed this summer. And then discovered that it should have been transferred to the city. But not only that, but it's being utilized by two other property owners. I reached out to the law director about the possibility of us selling it to them. The ORC is strict, and when it deals with ownership and selling a property, it has to be put up for bid. I could see a bad situation happening if we'd have put it up to bid. A competitor could have bought it and basically shut down the dentist's offices parking lot if they so wanted to. So she and I came up with the best thing to do was just grant an easement where they continue to use it like normal. It's the city's property, but they're allowed to continue using it.
Any other discussion?
And there's no hurry for this.
Let's move to Resolution 182-24. Can I get motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 182-24, a resolution approving an easement.
This is similar to just what he just said.
Same song, different piece of land. Adjacent to that.
Any discussion? Okay. Onto Resolution 183-24. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
Motion.
Second.
Resolution 183-24, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into collective bargaining agreement between the City of London and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employee Unit, number 1420.
So this is now public record. The other unions can now see what's in this.
Correct.
Okay. A couple of things that I read through this last night. In the document that was an attachment, or in a document that was emailed prior to this, thought of two questions. In Section 12.3, it says, it's talking about comp time accumulations are going to be reduced from 240 hours that an employee could have down to 100 hours. Is there going to be a payout for that? Are we going to be looking at an extra expense for that this year?
We always pay out comp time that's unused at the end of the year. So it's always paid out. The reasoning behind that is the staffing levels are such, in one of the union, the sanitation department in particular, that if they accumulate that and then decide to take three or four weeks off, we'll be short-staffed by one person for three or four weeks. And that is not a good thing with their department. Like, they can handle for somebody being on a vacation for a week, maybe two, but not four weeks or whatever they accumulate. So we, we voted to limit it to 100 hours. And all that does is then they get paid their overtime, so the employee gets paid.
Okay. And in Article 27, I know we discussed this privately. Current CDL holders will get a $1.50 increase on the hour, which 10 cents on the hour for having a CDL was always ridiculously low.
Well, if you go back and you research what it took to get a CDL, it didn't take much years ago. You basically studied and took a test and got it. Now you have to go to a class that costs a few thousand dollars. And it's getting hard to hire employees that have CDLs that wants to come here. So to try to entice them, we felt like we should supplement their pay by a dollar, what, $1.50 an hour?
Well, they asked for more, but I think that's what you guys settled at, or agreed to, was $1.50. However, my, my concern is where the language says current CDL holders will get a $1.50 increase. What about new employees?
It would be everybody.
Well, you might want to check that. I just think that when it says current, only the new, only the current employees would get that. Nobody else would either.
It read, current employees get 10 cents, and they all got 10 cents. So I'm assuming we'll follow through with the same practice. And I would think the union would have balked on that if it didn't apply to new employees.
And then my, my other question, has this been ratified?
It has been ratified by the union. According to our negotiating council, it has to be, it has to be codified. In other words, council has to pass it. You've got 30 days in which to act on it from when it was ratified, which was last Friday. So you got 30 days from Friday to get it, to get it passed by council. That's the, the final ratification. If you don't, it's by, it ratifies by default.
So why, and why would you do 30 days when it takes...
It's the law. I mean, I, I don't...
I, no, I mean, I didn't know, why wouldn't it be like 90 days or 60 days to go through all three readings?
You'd have to take that up with the powers that be, I guess. Probably because, I'm speculating, okay? Most, a lot of times, union contracts don't get negotiated for the next year until November, December. So if you give 90 days, now you're into the next contract year, and you're with, you're in limbo about giving raises that's been negotiated. Would be my only thought. I mean, there's, when I was on council, two separate times I was on there for the contract negotiations, and I think probably some of you might have been on with recent ones. It's, it's been negotiated in, you know, November, and you've got to get it done.
But you sat in negotiations as a council member?
No.
Oh, okay.
I, I, let me rectify that. I was invited to sit and keep my mouth shut.
Okay.
Yes, but I did sit.
That's all you can do is sit. You can't...
You can't be part of it, no.
In the clerical, what's the difference between the clerical department and clerical two? two?
Cleric.
Section 25-2, I mean.
Very few people, I don't know what the, what the difference is. I think they're all.
Clerical one's basically for part-time employees, and clerical two is full-time.
Yeah. Is there steps in there for the part?
In the clerical department, yes, there's step AB, yeah.
Yeah. I would assume it's just full-time, part-time. I think the pay scale covers everybody that's in clerical.
So when somebody gets hired on, or they're hired on as the clerical department, or like a clerical two?
I'm assuming they get hired as a clerical two. I'd have to see the contract to know exactly the way it reads, but if clerical one deals with part-time, I'm assuming that's for, if you had need for a part-time person to set pay scales for them, then clerical two would be your full-time people, and you've got pay scales to, that you go by on those.
Any other discussion on this? Want to move forward this or wait till next meeting?
When there's some questions on some of the stuff that we're going to have Jennifer look at, or did we clear that up?
I don't think so on the contract. Minutes? Yeah, I don't think we can change anything. It's been ratified. I don't think you can change it.
All right. This will stay on, on to roundtable. Michael?
Everybody's gone. Thanks for all those who did come out. Thanks for all those who are watching in. I got to say, I'm, I don't know, I guess I'm a little giddy, if you can get giddy over streets being fixed, but I was really, when I got this list today, I was, I was really, I was just impressed that we were able to, you know, 25% of those, those areas, we were, you know, we were taking care of them. I have seen some grumbling on Facebook about, oh, I've got to move my car, but listen, you know, that's, you know, that's the price we have to pay if we're going to have good streets. It's going to be inconvenient one time a year. Hopefully, everybody will work through that, but the, I looked at, I went through every single line, actually, and I think it was very well, I think each, each ward has a good representation. Some wards are a little bit worse than others. Third ward is, is worse than others. We have a lot of failed poor, and, and it, it looks like they're addressing quite a few of those in, in that area. But other than that, I, I think, I, I just, I'm just glad we're, we're getting some roads done. I think that's been a big, a big thing that I've heard and seen from people, that our roads are terrible, blah, blah, blah. Well, we're working on them, so be patient. You know, if you have to park somewhere different, it's only for a couple of days, then you'll be going down a nice, pretty little road. So thanks for listening in, and have a good weekend.
John?
I'm just glad 56 to the north is, they really did a nice job fixing that up. When they first did it, it was bumpy and yucky, and it's really nice now. And also, I found out London Elementary School earned a Tree Campus K-12 distinction. It's once again be honored, Tree Campus K-12 recognition from the Arborday Foundation for its dedication to tree-focused education. Goes along with what we do here in the city, and Plain City and Mount Sterling also are involved in all that now too. That's all I have. Thank you.
Andy?
Public Service Committee meeting is October 8th at 5 o'clock in the meeting room next door, and Finance Committee meeting is October 21st at 5:30 in the meeting room next door.
Rich?
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. John, I want to thank you. As far as the strawberry festival is concerned, a lot of good changes going on there. Heard some good comments, appreciate what you're doing with that. I want to thank all city employees for jobs well done, especially the street department taking care of our streets, like Mr. Norman said, it, it does, it makes you feel good, feel proud. Sorry you have to move your cars, but that's the price of a little bit of progress that we're making here, so. Red Raider football tomorrow night. Can't be there, listen to us on 105.1 FM. And Lord, we need some rain, we need it real bad, so if you've got something, you can send our way, and we'd appreciate it. And that's all I got.
Rich?
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and watching, and a shout out to my wife putting up with me for 34 years here in a couple of days. Be celebrating that this weekend. And I think we're going to have to probably put a lot more money aside next year for the roads, because I've noticed that most of what's going on is crack filling, and it's really not a repair, it's just temporary Band-Aid, you know, so we're going to have to start putting some more money into them. I don't know how much longer we can keep on filling cracks, you know, so that's all I got.
Okay.
Greg?
A couple of things. The process to do the roads, when that first came up, when we were going to spend the money, we asked how they were going to evaluate those, and through that discussion, that's what, that's what happened. That's why a company got hired to come in and take an outside look evaluation of our roads and rank those roads for us. Our sidewalks in this town, and a lot of places, are terrible. They're unsafe. We shouldn't be proud of that. In the newer parts of town, newer sidewalks are in good, good shape, but even in some of those places, you know, they've been damaged also. So today, I received an email from Councilman Norman that he came across something, I don't remember if it was Grove City or where, and they have a program that did valuations, and he contacted the company. I thought he was going to bring this up tonight. So they've invited him to, to watch a presentation on what they may do to evaluate the sidewalks the same way the roads were done. The problem to me is more of a, honestly, it's, it's more of a, a problem of us enforcing those rules and laws and making people fix their sidewalks when they're in bad shape. I understand nobody wants to be the bad guy, but if we know what kind of shape the sidewalks are in, and we can say we've got this much of a problem, and we decide to go forward with a sidewalk repair program, that whether or not we help people or not, at this point, that has to be determined, but I, I'm all in for it, all in favor of it. If I'm possible, I might join in and just watch the presentation. I don't know if anybody else knew about that, so I appreciate your letting me know about that. Second thing, you guys probably didn't see, because it came in late today from the Columbus Realtors, we get an email from Vince Coleman, once a month at least, and I just glanced through it, I don't know why, but I did, and the last sentence in there, it said, finally, one of central Ohio's fastest-growing villages, Plain City, had 20 sales in, in August with a median price of $451,684 per house. So I think these house numbers sound high, that we're still going to sell these houses, but that's what they're getting in Plain City. 20 houses sold for an average of $451,000, so maybe we're not out of the ballpark. I still think we have a, a housing issue. I don't know that $360,000 is really starter homes. I don't know how we fix it, but I hope that is brought up in the comprehensive plan, and we figure out a way to help fix that. I'll leave, the other thing I had, I'll let it go tonight. Thank you very much.
Interest rate digged you down half point yesterday.
Yes.
So that will help.
How does, can I ask, I'm sorry, how does that affect our loan with the police department? Is that going to bring that payment down? Because we were, we were worried that they were going to raise it, it was going to raise that payment.
I, I would assume that it would, it would go down some, because they're, they're doing it under a discounted rate already anyway. So half a percent to the general public might equate to a quarter or less, to them, I don't know, but it, it would definitely, I would think it would bring it down some.
Right.
Yeah, and we have been continually meeting with USDA in the application process. This is not, I mean, I think it's more complicated than filling out a grant, all the stuff that we got to do to get this loan, but we're working through it.
Thank you.
Again, motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Oh, my goodness. Ooh, good job. All the bits for day, baby. Go on up, all right?